Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get into the formal agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak this morning? Please rise and identify yourself and what's your case.
I'm Tricamo, Lebanon City. I just want to say I'm deeply disappointed in your decision to eliminate the Dropbox without having an alternative method in place. I spent more than 25 years as a member of the League of Women Voters, and we spent a lot of time working to make it easier for people to get out and vote. In a county as small as ours with something that is used by thousands of people to eliminate it without giving us any heads up and an opportunity to issue our opinions about it. I just don't think that was the right way to go about it. And I hope if you can't come up with an acceptable alternative to the Dropbox, that you'll consider leaving it in place for the elderly, the handicapped, and just those of us who find it a convenient and secure way to vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Rachel Moyer, Jackson Township. I am the founder and leader of Pennsylvania's for Freedom. It's a constitutional conservative group. And we're based here in Lebanon County, and I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Cooney and Phillips for your vote to remove the Dropbox. That has been one of our issues that we have for election integrity. And when Act 77 was made in 2019, Dropboxes were not included in the law, and I appreciate you all standing up for what the law says. Should we have no excuse mail-in ballots? Our group's consensus is no. However, that is the law at the moment. So I appreciate you all standing up for the law and getting rid of the Dropbox. And no excuse mail-in ballots are just that, and no excuse to have a mail-in ballot, not a drop ballot. And I, we appreciate you all for standing up for the law and what it states and standing for election integrity. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Kevin Miller, Anvil Township. I too would like to thank Commissioner Cooney, Commissioner Phillips for removing the Dropbox, making that vote, and I hope that you will stand with that. While I can appreciate that the Dropbox makes it easier to vote, I would point out that our country wasn't founded on making things easier, giving things to people. It was founded on liberty and protecting people's rights. And I think that there is always some possibility of fraud when you have a Dropbox where people are putting ballots in. We don't know if they're dropping their ballots, if you're dropping multiple ballots. I also find it interesting that for me, coming from Anvil Township, it was about a 12-minute to 15-minute drive to get here and another 12 to 15 minutes to go back. So if I wanted to use the Dropbox, I'm going to lose almost 30 minutes of time in order to use that Dropbox. My guess expenses were more than the mail that it would cost to mail my ballot back. I would also say that if people are willing to trust the mail system to deliver their mail-in ballot to them, they should be willing to trust the mail system to return that mail-in ballot back to them. And I would point out that there is still another option because it's my understanding that with a mail-in ballot, I can still go just down the hall here to the registration office, and I can physically drop that ballot here on the second floor. If people would like to come down and get their ballot, fill it out, and return it in the same day, that is totally possible. Now, if the commissioners can find an easier way for access to move it somehow down to the first floor, if there is a way to eliminate going through the security screening at the front of the building in order to do that function, I don't have an issue with that. But I think that the mail-in ballots that they're being dropped really should be dropped into the hand of an election official where we can verify that they're dropping one ballot and that they're dropping their ballot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Shirley McGowan. I'm a resident of Lebanon City, Maple Street. In years past, I have used personally the Dropbox, and I found it very secure. I have found that there are police officers, sheriffs observing us. We put one ballot in, and as far as founding on liberty, I mean, I, I'm a daughter of the American Revolution. I have a nine-year-old who fought for this country with his grandfather and father. So I know from my own heritage how important liberty is and have people having voices. And so having icy access, and that's the whole problem here, access. Where, how can someone with a disability have access to this dropping off of the ballot? Yes, you can have people observe. That's fine. Yes, you can have them give them to one person, but let's have access to all people. That is what my nine-year-old patriot fought for. That is what my family fought for. Equal opportunity for all people to be heard. And by denying them access and not providing an alternative to the access is denying my patriot what they fought for during the American Revolution. Our founding fathers fought for all people to be heard. And not to provide an alternative for these people to be heard is problematic to me personally, based on my heritage, but also someone who is a nurse, who is active in the community. I feed hungry people at Ethan Willow Streets. Why, where is their right? Why is there no other alternative way to get people with handicaps a way to get a ballot? Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Barb Seifer. I'm from Jackson Township. And I, basically, I want to diddle what these folks have said. My problem with the Dropbox and the machines and everything else that's going on in this county is a problem. And I think if we're not paying attention to the amount of publicity that is out there now that has researched and studied all the issues and the ability for machines to be hacked. In fact, there was one, I think, just in Georgia. They were in a courtroom. And the guy went in and he hacked it right there in a courtroom and was able to switch votes and flip votes. So my problem is if we are not paying attention to all the research that's being done throughout the entire county. There's articles everywhere. And if you even look from 2016 through 2018, 2019, 2020, now there's some 22, 2023 new articles that are coming out where the proof is in the pudding. They have actually proven that these things can be hacked and changed. No matter how secure you think they are, they aren't. And it, you know, basically, all you got to do, I would suggest, don't use a Google, but go out and use a brave browser or some other browser and search voting machines and watch what comes up. And you go down through it. There's articles from CBS, NBC, it's down the line, so it's not one-sided. This problem and the access becomes a denial of my valid vote if by any chance invalid votes get dropped in that Dropbox. My problem is this is a two-way street. And I think that, I'm hoping, praying that you guys will do the right thing and go back to same-day voting. I, paper ballots, ID to get in and vote and get rid of what Pennsylvania is doing and allowing anybody to come in and register to vote whether you're a citizen or not. When are the citizens who pay all these taxes going to get the break they deserve and somebody standing up and fighting for them? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of our January 17th executive session and our meeting of January 18th. And also just to announce that we did have an executive session yesterday afternoon during our workshop time for the litigation, real estate, and personnel issues that were discussed. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. We now have Sally Nguyen with us. Good morning.
It's on January 30th and 31st of $3,100,536.88. So that brings to a total cash of $3,628,205.10. We have expenditures this week of $3,260,390.88. And distributed tax pay is $182,347.79. So that leaves us a balance of $185,466.43.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Treasurer Nguyen's report. Any comment, any question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. Thank you.
You know, as an afterthought, Sally pointed out at our last meeting that some of our set aside money would be used. And I guess we're down to $4,366,994.
Good morning, Michelle. If you'd like to introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Good morning. Michelle Snidely, Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel, Transactions, Resignations, and Terminations. Holly Whitmar, Work Release Assistant/Assistant Counselor at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, resignation effective January 22nd. Connor Werny, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Removal/Term for Job Abandonment, effective January 23rd. Justin Spangler, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective January 25th. Bariya Tolbert, Office Support 2, Domesticulations, Termination, effective January 18th. And I have a rescind for Matthew Rothgaver, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office. We are rescinding the resignation, and that was for January 23, 2024.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Under Leaves of Absence, Andrea Suarez, Public Defender's Office, six-week leave of absence effective February 9th and expected return date of March 25th.
Make a motion to approve the request from the Public Defender's Office.
Second. It's removed and seconded that we approve that leave. Any questions? Hearing none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Under Changes to Status, Transfers, and Promotions, Ricardo Rosello, Change of Status from Part-Time Mail Transporter at Area Agency on Aging to Substitute Mail Transporter, Change in His Rate, effective February 4th. Mercedes Abernathy, Promotion from Caseworker 2 in Children and Youth to Case, excuse me, from Caseworker 1 in Children and Youth to Caseworker 2, at rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective February 4th. Isaac Bromberger, Promotion from Caseworker 1 in Children and Youth to Caseworker 2, at rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective February 4th. And Raffi Rothgaver, Change of Status from Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office to Casual Part-Time Deputy Sheriff at rate of $18.87 per hour, effective January 21st.
Motion to approve those changes.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Under Other Transactions, Children and Youth would like to hire Bradley Ann Wanger as a caseworker 1 at the rate of $1,562.16 by weekly, effective February 5th. Media Action Partnerships would like to hire Crystal Tenna as a full-time MATP officer, at rate of $1,131.44 by weekly, effective February 5th. The District Attorney Central Booking Unit would like to rehire Lance Mullins as a full-time booking agent at the rate of $15.08 per hour, effective February 5th. MHIDEI would like to hire Raquel Martinez as a caseworker 2 at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective February 5th. The Renova Center would like to hire Jason Wimmer as a full-time direct support aide at the rate of $16.21 per hour, effective February 5th. And the Sheriff's Office would like to rehire Stacy Hoyer as full-time deputy sheriff at the rate of $1,595.47 by weekly, effective February 5th.
Make a motion to approve those other transactions for hiring and rehiring.
Second. It's removed and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions, obviously read plus the following. Megan Tidwell, Salary Increase, Chief Public Defender, to the rate of $3,831.40 by weekly, effective February 5th. And Julio Sintron, Interpreter Pay, Interpreter Stipend for Building Security of $350 annual interpretive pay, and that is retro to the beginning of the year.
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor? Question?
The chief public defender, is that a new leader of the office? Oh, no. Oh, okay.
She's relatively new, but not brand new.
Okay. What's that?
Hired in May.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
When Brian went over to the DA.
Oh, this is a new person.
Any other questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. Thanks, Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, you may introduce yourselves and then proceed with your recent motion.
John Schott, Office of Probation Services, Criminal Justice Advisory Board.
Audrey Fortin, Director of Probation Services.
Okay, whoever's going to present?
I think I'm the duly elected.
All right.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. We're here this morning to request your authorization to submit a second modification to the current intermediate punishment grant. Now, this grant is originally approved by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency last June. Appropriated significant funds for various services at the D.A. Reporting Center, which ceased operations at the end of December. So the closing of the DRC has necessitated us to revamp the grant budget and reallocate, where possible, some of that funding to other areas and still adhering to grant guidelines. So what we've come up with, the alternate budget includes additional funding for the purchase of more drug-intestine supplies and also some new material for our behavioral therapy program, which we work, which is really working in conjunction with Pennsylvania Councilman Services. But despite that, the modified budget that we've been presenting to you today, if you have advanced cotton with your package, is $42,000 lower than the original document. Now, this is the time of year when PCCD does contact all counties, requests us to review our intermediate punishment budgets, determine our needs between now and the end of the fiscal year. So by submitting a new budget that is actually, you know, in a reduced amount, for a reduced amount, we could be conceivably assisting other counties that may find that they're in a position where they need more funding to finish their fiscal year. So we do ask for your authorization to proceed with the modified budget and submit that document to the Commission on Crime and Delinquency within the next few days.
Okay, well, entertain a motion. All motions approved.
Second.
So it's been seconded that we approve this intermediate punishment grant with the new numbers. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the signature pages, but this comes with extra pages for our controller, so if I can pass it over to him. It's always a signature page, so. Thank you so very much, Commissioner.
Thanks, Audrey. Morning. Adrian, introduce yourself, then you can just proceed with your presentation.
I'm Eden Lacer from Office of Aging and the Administrator of the Agency. Today, what I'm presenting is contract amendments for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. There are seven contract changes for an increased total net expenditure of $62,439. Funds available within the AAA block grant and the local funding will end up paying for these increases. So manpower with Kristen Rodriguez, our substitute mail driver, which is an hourly increase of 4% for three of the four manpower associates to keep in line with the other agency employees who are working in the same type of position. This is retro to January 1st of 2024. The total budget increase is $1,100. Service Master Commercial Services increased in cost of janitorial services, which is effective January 1st, 2024. Total for the budget increase is $842.94. Our Moms Meals Program is an increase of 9,327 units of meals from our projected budget. No change in cost of meals. The total for the budget increase is $60,345.85. Marco Shredding Company, an increase due to an additional bin added to the contract from two bins to three bins, a bin for each floor at the AAA. Total for the budget increase is $150. Moms Meals, home-delivered special meal price. Inadvertently, the amount listed on the commissioner's spreadsheet would be approved on June 15, 2023. Listed for $7.44 cents per meal should have been $7.76 cents per meal. No change in fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Charlie's Angels Home Care is a new provider that's been added as of January 16, 2024 for in-home personal care. No change to fiscal year 2023-24 budget. And our Farmer's Market Nutrition Program is an addendum to their original contract, which was on 2020, when we went into that agreement. And as for our Farmer's Market checks, they ended up changing the language for agency responsibilities in the new contract that they ended up having for the amendment. No funding changes that way.
Can these all be done as one motion?
Yes.
I would say that the provider contracts should be one, the Farmer's Market Nutrition Programs, they agree with the Commonwealth. So the amendment is with the Commonwealth. I think it's best to probably separate that from it.
I take a contract amendments first.
I have a question about one that must be asked. The Moms Meals Increase, is that? Do you have a sense of what's driving that? Is it simply the population that's moving into that age of need, I guess? Or how do you feel? Why do you feel that's happening?
I do feel that that program that was was held back more on being able to provide the Moms Meals. But we've kind of found that there are people in the community that it works for them more because they might be more active. They might be going to doctor's appointments, therapy sessions. They're not at home to get our Meals on Wheels where it's, you have to see somebody to end up having that contact with our Meals on Wheels program. I think another drive might be coming from the hospitals. When they end up doing a discharge plan, the social workers end up referring for the Moms Meals program where some of our, some of the insurance companies already have that type of program within their insurance company. Like 30 days of Moms Meals, they end up being able to order through an insurance company on discharge. And what ends up happening is once that stops with an insurance, we kind of pick up the same type of meal delivery service as what they were getting through the insurance company.
So there's a distinction between Moms Meals and Meals on Wheels in that Meals on Wheels, we engage with someone when we drop off the meal and that, had a wellness check at the same time. Moms Meals is just dropping off.
Well, our Meals on Wheels program is face-to-face contact. You have to see the person. So yes, it's used as a check-in system, but it's for people that are mostly homebound and don't end up going out, don't have a lot of contacts in the community. So we do end up checking on them that way to make sure they're okay. The Moms Meals are delivered on a biweekly basis. And so they get their 10 meals delivered on a biweekly, and they have to be responsible in heating them up when they end up eating.
Okay. And again, whereas Meals on Wheels are ready, ready to go. They're delivered.
Yes, they're warm and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the $62,439 increase on the contract changes. I know what you said, they can't do all that.
Yeah, let's just do the Farmer's Market, the agreement with the Commonwealth. I would do so.
So, contract amendments.
Second. Second.
Okay. It's removed and seconded that we approve these contract amendments. Any questions regarding the motion for Adrian anything?
Is the Moms Meals, is that for seniors too, or is that, I never heard of this. Is that?
Yeah, it's for 16 over with what the Office of Aging is able to deliver.
Oh.
It comes out of the same pot of money that we get for the state for Meals on Wheels program, but it's just being able to be offered in a different way.
They can be frozen when they get there, right?
The Moms Meals are stay fresh.
Stay fresh.
And they're also able to end up kind of picking and choosing what they want. They can call in their order, and they can choose from breakfast food to lunch to meals. But they get 10 that are ordered per week. Or.
Two weeks.
But yeah, for two weeks. So five meals a week, because the same meals of what they'd be getting with the Meals on Wheels program is five a week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Nothing else? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. Then I'll take the second part of the, as the Farmer's. Make a motion to approve.
Second emotion?
It's removed and seconded that we approve the Farmer's Market Nutrition Program relationship contract. Any questions regarding that part of the motion or that motion? Excuse me. Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. Was that an aye?
That was a yes.
Okay.
I just had a wrong.
It is. Okay. Adrian, and you have something else there about the?
Yes, so the second on my agenda, what I'd like to present is the sale of the AAA bus that we've had, the Pride of the Valley, which has been sitting at Brightville Transportation since 2019. There's been a lot of discussion and certain people that have come up to me since I've taken over asking to have this sold. And so the different things that I've looked at over the last presentation of this being presented to be sold still kind of stand still with what the issues are, with the Office of Aging being responsible for it. The number one thing would end up being the liability, whereas and just read off what I have many years ago, the hiring mechanism for a bus driver was directly through civil service and county table, which was discontinued in 2008. We then began to hire drivers through a contract. We then began to hire drivers through a contract with London Transit. London Transit terminated this agreement in two thousand eleven. AAA was then forced to move to hiring drivers as independent contractors. This arrangement became problematic as it makes it hard to determine the liability of who's responsible and whose insurance will pay if an accident should occur. Going through employment agencies, it was found they were unable to accommodate or request to hire a driver. London Transit was revisited to see if they could provide a contracted driver, and they stated union issues prevented them from being able to assist to assist us. So I know the last time that this was actually in operation, it was an issue just finding drivers at that time. And they actually wanted more hours on a regular basis and a and a more schedule of some sort, knowing what the hours would be that that we would be able to provide. We also should have been able to hire two drivers to be able to have a backup if one wasn't able to end up providing the transportation. So there was no mechanism to be able to provide training to the drivers when hired under this capacity and to whom the responsibility would have fallen under.
And even if you could hire drivers, the liability issue would still exist.
Yeah, the number one issue is liability. The bus, the bus issues, the bus was purchased in nineteen ninety-nine with relatively low miles. The bus is now twenty-five years old and has two hundred and fifteen thousand miles and has depreciated from sitting at Brightville's Transportation since two thousand nineteen. Doesn't have a, the battery is not connected, there's issues with the wheels on the back that probably need to be replaced, so it's not even in running order at this point. With our funding, regulations required to run a transportation-related program that receives donation, our bus fares, states that donations received in one year would need to be spent by the end of the next fiscal year. So this precluded the ability to accumulate revenue to purchase a replacement bus. Also, the increase in costs run to cost just to run the bus, gas, driver liability insurance has all increased over the years, and the seniors would no longer be able to receive the reduced fare they were used to. The benefits to using a contracted charter company. Charter companies can provide more flexibility for several different options in bus sizes, depending on the amount of people and the trip. All senior centers could travel to popular destinations on the same day and potentially save on admission fees at the attraction and provide a more cohesiveness among our senior centers of Lebanon County. Charter companies would be responsible for providing a trained and insured driver and having substitute backups. Charter companies would be responsible for maintaining the vehicles and providing backups as necessary. And center managers would be able to focus on the details of the destination rather than calling for quotes or trying to find a bus driver. AAA would no longer be responsible for updating updating and maintaining a vehicle. So with all these factors stated, I believe it is in the best interest of Lebanon County AAA to sell the bus and remove the responsibility from county agency of being responsible for a passenger bus. We are not in the business of operating a charter bus that needs to be maintained and provided with a certified insured driver. The senior centers have been using charter bus companies for the last several years, which has been a benefit by not having to manage a bus, find a driver and coordinate quotes. The senior center managers have been able to dedicate their time to the destination and be engaged with the seniors that are participating in the trip.
Funny, I'm, I've served on your advisory board for the last two years. It's been discussed several times at the five, before level on your leave agreement. And this has come several times and I'm wondering why it wasn't done before.
I have a couple of questions, three actually. What is the minimum and maximum number of people that you haul, I say haul, transport on a trip? In other words, how many do you have to sign up before you will take a trip?
I do not have those numbers at this point, just because of when I took over, the bus wasn't even in operation since two thousand.
When you take your.
Well, I I think from what I've seen on the charters that have come through, it can be anywhere from thirty to forty, but then I've seen some people cancel on those. And so then it can be maybe twenty-five to twenty-seven. It just fluctuates. We, I get a list and I review it, and there was a whole bunch of people that signed up. And then towards the end of when the trip comes up, they're crossed off and they've canceled. So, and I mean, initially, it can end up being thirty to thirty-five, and then it's gone down to twenty, twenty-seven.
Okay, then the next question would be, how many trips do you take per year with the charter? With all the senior centers?
I've been here in June, I've seen one bus trip that's gone through.
So maybe only two a year?
I think, I think we would end up with more as time goes on and and the COVID thing ends up settling down. But I know a lot of the seniors right now are kind of still a little apprehensive about getting on a bus and going on trips. But a bunch of people, some don't care. But I do feel as time goes on that people will be doing it more.
Okay, and then my last question is, how much do you think we'll get for Pride of the Valley?
I keep trying to get some type of quote from speaking with Brightville and.
Is there a range?
Well, there's, there's different options as to the people I've talked about. We could put it on an auction company, which goes nationwide for anyone to bid on. But those people could also just bid on it to scrap it. And then I've talked to other people that are within the area that we'd be able to advertise and get at least three bids through them, and they seem very interested in it. I think it all depends on who the buyer is of what they're looking to do with it.
Can I supplement that a little bit?
Yes.
Adrian and I have talked about this several times in the last several weeks. So under the, under the sale of surplus equipment, so on, within the county code, we can either just put it out, put an advertisement out, people can put a bid, you open bids, you take the highest bid. It also provides for an electronic auction-type process, which, as she mentioned, there is a a bus auction in Western Pennsylvania that takes place. It's online, the bus doesn't have to be transported there or anything. And and that reaches the appropriate audience, those are people who are buying buses. I don't know, I don't have an estimate. Let me say that first, I don't know what it'll sell for, but what we have also talked about is the condition it's in right now is, as she described, it's just sitting there, dead batteries, rotten tires. You know, it needs work. In speaking with the service manager at at Brightbill, they believe for a small amount of money, they can probably get it fired up, running, moving, which, you know, if you're having an auction or you're having a bid, that's going to add value, you know. It's going to be a lot different of a of a value if somebody knows it runs drives. And I don't have any reason to believe it won't. You know, we didn't park it broken, we parked it running, just, just not.
Five years ago.
Five years ago. But, you know, they maintain the bus all the, all the time we've had it. They've been very gracious to store it there for now, and and now they're even willing to say, hey, you know, we'll help you get it ready for sale. And I believe they also have some connections and some people who are interested in it right off the bat. You know, maybe their customers or just people their connection with the industry. So I don't think it's, it's not a budget balancer, you know.
No, it's forty-five years old with two hundred thousand miles.
Yeah, you're talking about maybe a four or five-digit.
Okay, then I'd like to follow up with why I was asking the question about the price. First of all, I'd like to point out that many things are buy as rent, are copiers and certain vehicles that we purchase. And I do know that the vans nowadays can hold like thirteen people. It would take, and then you don't need a special bus driver. Our staff could drive. I was wondering if there would be any value in having two vans and how much the, this, the sale of this bus would give us to put towards vans that we would buy as rent, basically. So it wouldn't be all put out upfront, except for whatever we get from the sale we could put on.
So you're saying the drivers would be our county employees?
So that that would, we're already then covered with insurance, it's de minimis, I think, to add them.
Well, I still feel that that's a liability with our county employees transporting people, especially a large group like that.
And I'm, as you know, involved with the county's insurance and designated loss control for the county. I would say that, yes, there would be coverage for an employee, but that would then take the employee away from whatever duty they're doing for those trips. A senior center, center manager may, may accompany them on the trip or may not, it might be something where they're, they stay back, I don't know. But, but further, driving a twelve or fifteen-passenger van isn't something that everybody wants to do. And I've done it, you know, it's, it can be a little hairy, especially when it's full. And also, a van doesn't offer the same comforts or, you know, you're really, you're really crammed into one of those vans, depending on how far it's going. I don't know if the seniors would be as interested in a trip if that were the case. But, but to your question, I, I, you know, those are probably in the neighborhood of forty to fifty thousand dollars apiece, so the sale of the bus wouldn't contribute a lot toward that.
I'm really interested in in exposure that we would have and also putting that on an employee. And it doesn't make sense to me. I think if my recollection is correct, and this goes back several years, that we are the last county to have a bus in the state.
Yes, we are.
So, you know, everyone else has gotten away from it because of the exposure. And you know, loss control is is great, but if you have fifteen people and they get injured under the care of the county, that, that's a, you know, going to be a big number. I I just think it's, it's beyond what we, the scope of what we should do. And I think what the way you're handling it with a contract service, with a bus service that that does that for a living, makes more sense to me.
Well, just.
And again, on top of that, I don't think there's a demonstrated need right now for the patient services. Again, due to some of the things that you said, that we discussed at the advisory board level. I don't think there's a demonstrated need right now, there may be at some time, but I think that's where the discussion ought to come from, the advisory board and the recommendation to pursue something like that.
I'd just like to point out that we transport prisoners on a regular basis with our own staff. It's not a big deal, so.
So noted, thank you. We need a motion, or do we need a motion, is this an information?
I think if you want to proceed, then a motion to authorize the bidding and sale of the of the bus, so that the process goes, or I use the sale of the bus.
I'll second the motion, and if I may just add, I I'd like to find out what we get for the bus and explore further the desires of our constituents, your clients, if they are interested in smaller buses, because those seats can be a lot more comfortable than those big buses. But some of them have fancy seats and some don't, more like school buses.
Any other discussion regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same signs, so moved. Anything else?
Yeah.
Thanks, Adrian.
Is that a unanimous vote?
I think so.
Yep.
What did you?
Did you vote yes for that?
Yeah.
I think you.
I I did vote yes, because I know the bus is old and high mileage. But I'd also like to explore a replacement in the form of smaller buses, just a request.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
We'll know in a moment.
Okay. I don't think, this shouldn't be that complicated.
If you'd like to introduce yourself, then we can proceed.
Sure, Julie Chaney, Lodi County Planning Department. And I I just have a simple fee resolution for the hourly rate for the county engineer. And I would be honest with you, that we just recently did a, an update to the stormwater ordinance, and that was an oversight, actually on my part, probably when we were going through that. That could have easily been addressed then. So kind of after the fact, we're kind of coming back and and filling in what we, what we did, what we failed to do when we did that amendment. I'm I'm asking for an increase of twenty dollars. This is the first increase, he's been with the county almost twenty years. This is the first hourly rate increase that we've requested. And in comparison, I did some comparison with other engineers that work for Lebanon County, and he by far is underpaid in comparison to those other engineers with his years of experience.
So make a motion to approve a one hundred and twenty dollar per hour of county engineer fee.
It's removed and seconded that we approved this stormwater management ordinance request. Any conversation about it, Jamie?
One comment, two, two comments, just as a clarification. This fee is is paid by the the plan, by the, by the plan owner.
Yes, correct, yes.
This is, the county pays this, this is, this is the cost of reviewing stormwater installments.
Right, the client pays this fee.
And then secondly, though this is amending the, the, this is a change to the ordinance, solicitor has reviewed this and and it can be done by resolution if you're just changing that component of people. So we did, we did run that by.
Okay. It's removed and seconded, no, any other discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Have a nice day, thank you.
Good today.
Who has the suit on?
Gary's.
Oh, my goodness.
Look at that.
All right.
How's everyone?
Not as good as you.
Life is good.
Well, good morning, introduce yourself and your position, and you may proceed to further.
My name is Gary Verna. I am the Deputy Director of Emergency Management with the Department of Emergency Services. I'm here today to present the two thousand twenty-three Hazard Mitigation Plan and asking for your acceptance and action on approving it and accepting it and adopting it.
Make a motion to approve the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Second. We moved and seconded, any highlights that you'd like to offer, Gary?
Just that it was, it was a collaborator collaborative approach between a bunch of different departments within the county. Commissioners here secured the grant in twenty-three, twenty-two to start the two thousand twenty-three process. It was a year-long process. We had a public input on it. And we got what we got, you know, came up with it. It will be on the Department of Emergency Services website for people to access under the Emergency Management tab, so.
Purpose of the plan?
Purpose of the plan is to, any, for mitigation, we, we identified risks within the county, and this plan helps us come up with mitigation procedures and to to take care of those risks or make an impact, whatever impact from those risks, you know, less. And also, we need this plan in place. If there is a disaster, declared disaster in the county, to open up funding to come down to the county from state, federal level.
So like, just a good, a good example, I think, of what you do is you look at flood maybe as a disaster. And there have been areas that historically have flooded over and over and over again. And occasionally, there are funds available to either relocate or or reimburse.
Reload, reload, reimburse or purchase?
Or purchase properties that are known to flood, say, every time the swati, you know.
Yes, every time the swati or certain parts of the quity.
So mitigating that damage every time and that emergency.
It's, it gets expensive, and sometimes the cheapest thing is just purchase. And that, that comes from higher level, of course, than than county level, but that's where the funds come down from.
But those are the kind of things you identify in this plan.
Yeah.
This is an area that if given the opportunity, you know, we'd mitigate it.
Yep, and with, with, with input from the municipalities within the county. Yep. And with, with, with input from the municipalities within the county, we've come up with our risks that, that we are looking at to help mitigate those risks and find a solution.
Thank you for your work. Very thorough and well done.
You have a motion and a second. I just want to add one thing, but you left the hazmat team in great condition.
Oh, thank you.
And you've continued the quality work in your new position. So I just wanted to recognize that because that was another big contribution to the county that, you know, as time passes, people forget that. All right. Any questions for Gary or any other discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Good morning. Matthew Bugley, County Solicitor. I just have one item for consideration by the board this morning. This is a fee agreement with Busken Davis Law Office pertaining to several cases which were ongoing before I became the county solicitor at the beginning of January. Attorney Greg Weest with Busken Davis, he'd been handling several matters on behalf of the county when Dave Warner was the solicitor. And I felt in consultation with the county administrator and in consultation with attorney Weest, that it would be in the best interest for him to just stay on and, and follow through on the representation of several of these matters. And the, the matters in which Busken Davis will be continuing as legal representative on behalf of the county are in the agreement as Exhibit A. I will note that one of the matters under the Board of Assessment Appeals has already been settled since this agreement was provided to me. Another matter, which it was Item Two A, this was actually covered in Lev Town. That matter is presently under consideration by Judge Charles. So several of these matters are either nearing the conclusion or have concluded. So this agreement is just to finalize our scope of representation with, with Busken Davis and with Attorney Weest. Obviously, as new cases are filed, I will be handling them on behalf of the county.
A question before I participate in a motion. Where did you get twelve percent? Banks aren't that high.
This was provided by Busken Davis. This is their standard. This was their standard fee agreement that they provide to all clients.
I was going to say there's an article, I think it was, I don't want to get the wrong paper, but one of the two papers represented Lev Town or Lebanon Daily News this morning, I think. And it said that the feds are not going to raise any more interest rates. They may even drop some. And it's like twelve percent seems excessive to me on a loan.
It's, well, it's, it's not a loan. It's a, it's a penalty if we don't, it's a late penalty.
Yeah, that's just.
But it still would be equivalent to a bank loan because they're floating the money. It seems like a lot of interest.
Well, they give it sixty days to pay, so if it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we'll.
I don't think we'll be into that.
Either. I just look at that number and say, twelve percent interest is awfully high.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion and hopefully they would look at that again. I might just have been redone and not thought about.
Hopefully the bills will be paid on time.
That's right. Yeah.
Says any penalty and that's part of the agreement and hopefully we'll never.
That's right. As, as soon as the bill gets forwarded, we will make sure it gets forwarded to the controllers office.
Good to know. Any questions or more discussion regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Well.
All right. Amy Wanneman, County Administrator. Good segue because I have some more attorney contracts here. These are existing contracts that we have agreements with two law firms that are for conflict criminal attorney services. If and when the public defender's office has a conflict with a defendant or in a case, then the court assigns those to an outside firm. You'll recall that we had contracted with these two firms in two thousand twenty-three and, and previously. This, two agreements with Busken Davis and with Jacobson Julius and Harshberger Law Offices are to essentially just change the count, the number of cases each are going to handle. One's going up, one's going down and the number that they're going to handle.
So it's still equal?
It's, it's actually less, less one. I'm sorry. One's going down two, one's going up one, I think. I get that correct.
Yeah.
So, so the contracts are for the, with, with Busken Davis is for five criminal appointments per month at a thousand dollars per case or five thousand dollars per month, as long as it is five. It's not five thousand. But it's per case, maximum five thousand dollars. And then there's an hourly fee of two hundred and fifty dollars if they have to be involved in jury selection. And then for Harshberger, Josh Harshberger with Jacobson Julius and Harshberger, it is eight appointments per month, same terms.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those conflict attorney arrangements. Any questions regarding the motion? Or any discussion needed?
Actually, should we have an addendum? Because I did not read that when I read this about maximum of five to a maximum of eight. Is that in there?
It's. Eight, eight criminal. In the first paragraph, attorneys agree to accept and represent to the best of their ability, eight criminal appointments per month as selected by the court of common pleas. And the other one is the same with five.
And so that is saying the same thing as we wouldn't pay for them unless we use them?
I, I know from step exорless, that is the clear understanding with the firms. I.
Just wondered if we should do a little sentence ad on or something that would make that perfectly clear.
I, I, I believe we've already adopted these conflict case arrangements prior with the same language. We're just changing the numbers. So it's apparently been enforced and clear to the folks that are, are using it. I'm not interested in adjusting any language to.
Let me, if I may counter. Locally, attorney firms have been bought and sold recently. And Busken Davis has really hung in there. But Bernie is getting up in years and if he decides to sell, we don't know what the next group would enforce. And so I think they might nitpick on words and I think maybe we should cover ourselves.
There'll be quite a few mites in there, but go ahead.
The assignment is under the control of the court. So the court appoints them. I mean, Judge Tillwalk would have to appoint more than five and more than eight for them to get more than five. So there's a, you know, it's.
But my question is on the bottom and I saw.
Something happens to Bernie and then there's a new owner of the law firm. That's, I think, that's what I.
Right.
And I, I just, I'm not interested in amending any language.
The numbers, you, you said we wouldn't pay five if we didn't have five.
Correct.
Okay, but that, I don't read that in here unless I'm just interpreting it differently.
Well, it says five and eight. I mean, it says five appointments per month, eight appointments per month.
But it doesn't say a maximum of.
But it's defined. I mean, I, you could, if you.
It was, it was trying to make it more airtight so that if there's a change in ownership at the firm, that we don't get left out, you know, having to pay for things that we aren't using. Because we're getting a full staff down at the public defender's office and they should be able to work things out between them more.
You know, I've, I've lost track. Is there a motion on the floor? Okay, let's do a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second the motion. With hopes that they think about what I've said.
Any discussion further? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Next item I have is a request for hotel tax grant funding through the, a grant program administered by the Koshers. The applicant is making a difference of Lebanon. And the, the program is a five K fun run and walk to be held at Coleman Memorial Park. There is a description on the back. This is a March thirtieth run. And they intend to draw participants from all over Pennsylvania and are requesting a six hundred dollar grant for a total project cost of fifteen hundred dollars.
I would make a motion for three hundred and seventy-five dollars to be awarded, which is twenty-five percent, which are the rules that we have established.
No, it's the opposite. Right?
Yeah, twenty-five percent matches required.
It's not that we only pay twenty-five.
Right. Add it backwards. Thank you.
So are you going to amend your motion?
Yes, that way you give them the six hundred.
Sir, second. I'll second. We've been seconded. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close same signs, so moved.
And we've received a resignation from Al Smith of the M H I E E, I, M H I D E I Advisory Board, National Health Advisory Board. He's tendered his resignation to the board. He has served for eleven years and has contributed greatly. This was from the Chair of the Board, Sarah Fuller. So, except, yeah, seeking a motion to accept Al Smith's resignation. Thanks.
Like that motion and I recognize Mr. Smith for his service.
I'll second the motion. He's a good BM.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close same signs, so moved. You good? Okay, anything on the floor? We will seek a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
Here we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and for your input.